Good evening, everybody. Before tonight's meeting, the Board met with two applicants for the Environmental Advisory Council. There's only one position open, which is an alternate position for that council to applicants, and we encourage both Ms. Mitchell and Mr. Soblosky to attend the EAC meetings, which are held the second Tuesday of each month, beginning at 7:00 PM. They're open. All meetings and committee meetings and Board Commission meetings are open to the public at all times. However, we do have to make an appointment, so we'll entertain a motion if anybody's ready to make.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Shawn Soblosky to the EAC, Environmental Advisory Committee.
That's the alternate position?
Yes.
Is there a second?
A second.
Discussion conversation. All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome, Mr. Soblosky, and you will send him a note.
Yes, I will.
And also, please keep Ms. Mitchell informed of whether there's any future options.
Absolutely.
She asked if that happened. Any visitors for public comment tonight? Mr. Patonostro.
My name is Joe Patonostro from Halk Road. I went to that electronics collection over in the Shammany Manor to take all these old CRTs and whatever is electronic. And my understanding is some of the money is kicked back to the county. I don't know if any of the municipalities get any, but as far as I'm concerned, anything to keep my taxes down is welcome. And it does help the environment, and what I'd like to see the township do is advertise these dates in their newsletter, on the website, or anything, any place else that it can be advertised, so that the residents know what's going on as far as that. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll make sure we catch all that stuff, huh?
Yeah, we usually do. Usually have it on our website.
Good evening, Lee Schwartz. Last meeting, we had a nice letter from somebody that had a fence installed. I guess it was the corner of Wells Road and Lower State. My question is, when we install bike paths, is that in the public right of way? And is the township paying to put that fencing up on private property? It appears it may be another property was done as well.
It's in the right of way.
It's in the right of way.
But we're paying for it even though it's a benefit to the private property owner?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so anyone that would ask for a fence if we put that path in is entitled to one?
Not necessarily. It depends on the negotiations, but we did not pay for anything from that property owner. And the township has always felt that we're not going to need so much stranded when we make improvements in the township.
So the policy would be that if somebody really wants a fence, if we put in this bike path in and around their property, they should make sure that they ask for that if they'd like to have it?
That's what would happen, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other comments? Next meeting of this Board is Tuesday, August 21st. Sounds, a summer concert series for 2012 continue with Robert Eric in Central Park. What kind of band is that, Robert Eric Band?
The Lethal Cover Band.
Thank you. Oh, really?
Yeah.
That's July 18th at 7:00 PM in Central Park. Ravon Band is July 25th, 7:00 PM at Chapman. And the Beach Bums are going to be performing on August 1st at 7:00 PM in Central Park. Admission is free for all those concerts. Leave and yard waste recycling schedule for Saturday, July 21st, has been canceled due to ongoing roadwork on New Britton Road. Next collection date is Saturday, August 18th, and you can bring your yard waste to Central Park entrance located off New Britton Road anytime between 9:00 AM and noon. That's free for township residents. And I just want to note here also in announcements that Tuesday, next Tuesday, July 24th at 7:00 PM, I believe it's Lenape Middle School.
Yes, correct.
It will be the five municipality presentation on the police regionalization ongoing discussions. That's next Tuesday, Lenape Middle School, 7:00 PM. Next item on the agenda is the minutes approval for June 19th, 2012. Is there such a?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any corrections, comments, revisions?
No.
Hearing none. Move the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye with one abstention. That would be me. Correspondences from the Public Water Sewer Advisory Committee, from Mr. Harvey requesting that the committee make a more formal presentation to the township residents. And there's also comments in here from Mr. Boyle, who's the Bucks County Health Department representative, and a letter from Mr. De La Rentes, who is one of those folks who closes down systems.
No, Mr. De La Rentes is a resident in the neighborhood.
Oh, he requested.
Yes, he recommends his comments and everything.
So, so Board, we, Mr. Harvey, do you care to say anything to us at this point? I mean, I think the request is pretty evident. You know, the committee's been working two years. They want to have a public meeting, want the Board of Supervisors to host this public meeting. At this public meeting, it's recommended that we have the Bucks County Health Department, Bucks County Water and Sewer, folks, representatives from that entity, Senator McElhenney, and somebody who can speak to the closing down of systems, because I know that was a question. Anybody else we think that might be helpful in that public discussion? And I guess, do I need that in form of a motion? I could be just holding.
Well, if you have a date in mind, you ought to just mention it publicly. If you don't, then.
We were talking about September after the summer.
I would think probably late September or mid. Yeah.
Yeah, you don't want to do it in August because you have a lot of people that are away, and I know that there's some times in the past people were concerned about that.
We'd also, we're going to pick a date right now, but we also, everyone out there who's listening, who has an interest in this meeting, and perhaps we will send notice specifically to these folks.
Oh, absolutely.
That they call, let us know if they're going to be attending, because if we need a bigger venue, then we're going to get a bigger venue. But we're not going to rent a unit, another facility, if we don't have to. This holds up to, what, 150 people?
About 120.
What does it say?
It says 104 over there.
Don't look at what it says over there on the fire hazard.
We can probably put about 120, but beyond that, it's a little tricky.
So.
Yeah, if it's going to get larger than that, we do need to know if we need to go to another venue and that. And the problem with that is that then we aren't capable of televising. And one of the nice things about being able to host a meeting here now is that we can televise.
Our next, our meeting in September, our second meeting in September is September 18th. I would suggest that we do it the following Tuesday on the 25th, same time, 7:00 PM.
It's available if we can get that.
Well, I think if we can have it here, but if we need to have it somewhere else, we would know that two weeks in advance.
Probably talk in the morning or something.
Okay, so we're all good with that?
September 25th?
Yes.
I'm not good on that date, but that's fine.
Okay.
Everybody else is.
I'm okay. Okay. All right, so done. September 25th. And I hope Ms. Sandra could be back in time to help orchestrate that presentation.
And that'll be an official public meeting, so it'll need to be advertised, and the appropriate residents notified. That'll be a seven part.
Yes, sir. Okay, you good?
I'm good.
All right, moving on then. Next item on the agenda is fencing on Windy Way Lane.
Yes. The Board will see that you have actually two pieces of correspondence. The first one is signed by several residents looking for the township to take some action to repair and replace a fence that was put out there by a previous owner approximately 40 years ago and make some additional improvements. You also will see a letter from Mr. McCann, who's also a resident in the area, who actually offered to pay to replace the fence there. The Board will also recall that on previous road inspection, we did go out with Mr. John, and we did look at that area along Windy Way Lane, and at the time, the Board was not inclined to take any action to replace the fence or anything. Our recommendation in light of the first letter was to perhaps remove the fence and some of the debris around the fence, and perhaps build a small berm with maybe some evergreen trees to block the, because the roads don't come through, we need some sort of a barrier. According to Dave Tompkins, we need something to kind of barricade people going straight through.
This land is in the right of way. Am I correct?
There's a bit of right of way there, yes.
Yes.
Yes, there's a bit of right of way.
So it's our responsibility.
And I'm sure we have a number of residents who would see me as well, who would share their thoughts.
So specifically, what are you recommending? What is the administration recommending?
Our recommendation, administration was in response, the first letter was to do a small berm, take the fence down, and do a small berm in our right of way, and put some shrubbery on it.
And then there's a resident that is going to take off some of the other fencing or not?
There was a resident who indicated that he would be willing to pay for a fence because that was one of the things residents also wanted, was a fence.
So is there going to be a fence or not in addition to the berm?
That's dependent.
I think the question is and/or.
And/or, in addition.
It's up to the Board and.
Wait, no, 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 no. I'm just talking about a fence. If we do what we're responsible to do, because it's a township portion thing, berm and shrubbery, is there also going to be a fence that a neighbor has agreed to put up?
There could be. I mean, we would do, we're recommending to the Board the two-foot berm and the evergreen trees. What came after and was sort of brought to us by Mr. McCann was that he would offer to put a fence there instead of a berm.
You do have residents here who might want to.
Is Mr. McCann here?
Yes.
Sir, if you want to come up and clarify. I think the issue for us is, this is an area that one road without some kind of partition cuts through to another road. I mean, you're, so.
Officially, but yeah.
Yeah.
They dead end each other, yeah.
So that there has to be some kind of notice in some kind of form, either a fence or a berm, to stop traffic there.
Yes.
Mr. McCann, hi.
Hi, how are you? I'm here actually with a number of residents from Hidden Lane, and all of us together are jointly going to pay for the fence. Our proposal is that we would put a fence there. I don't see any reason for a berm. And when the people from Windy Way decided that they wanted a fence, we agreed with them. We want a fence also.
Okay.
But they wanted you to pay for the fence, and from the conversations I was having, it didn't look like that was going to happen. So we obtained some, two quotes from fencing companies, and to replace the existing fence, and we're willing to pay for it.
So we don't need to do anything? Except say, go ahead.
You'd rather see a fence there than a berm?
Yes.
There's something.
Wait, one at a time, okay? We're going to need you to come up and identify yourself. But that's what you're, you guys are okay with that, and we don't need a berm then?
Right.
Okay.
And you really would prefer the fence to the berm?
We would prefer the fence to the berm.
Neighbors are saying, I don't know.
All right.
Is it the, I mean, just real quick, I understand there's more residents that want to speak, but is it what you have planned or intended, is it a similar design? Is it?
It's, the fence, the fence that's falling down now is a six-foot stockade fence. The fence that'll go up in its place is a six-foot stockade fence.
And about?
The only thing.
So we have a picture of it? How about how long?
144 feet.
Oh, okay.
And I don't know if you have my letter there or not, but the only difference that we would do in building the fence now is the framework of the fence now faces us and has for the last 40 years. If we're paying for the fence, we're going to have the framework face the other way, and we'll take the front of the fence.
Okay, that's fair. Your fence faces whatever way you want, I guess. Sir, would you care to come up, please, and?
Hi. My name's Alan Moore. I'm a resident of Windy Way, and this concern surfaced through Windy Way neighbors, you know, because the fence is falling down. So we brought this to the attention of the Board, that we felt that, you know, since a lot of the stockade fence is really on township property, and we felt, well, maybe the township could help out.
Was it always on township property? Did it fall down on township property?
No, it's always been. It's kind of like a cul-de-sac.
Yeah, I know the area. My understanding was that it was privately installed, and then it fell down, and it's on township property, but that also we have a liability there because there wasn't a fence, or the fence is now broken and falling down, and the folks can come not knowing that to stop there, they can go strictly through to Hidden Lane.
Exactly.
Which is a liability.
We're concerned that there might be motorized traffic, you know, eventually going through there, and what it's not intended to do. But we're also concerned that the children in the neighborhood would be able to have foot passage, you know, down to Hidden Lane. There's cricks down there and all that, you know, pine rot. And Mr. McCann was kind enough in his group to offer, you know, to put up for the fence the money, but he also had provisions. And one was that he didn't want to allow foot traffic. You know, he wanted the fence solid with no space between for the kids to cross through. And secondly, you know, he had the provision that he wanted the fence reversed, so then, which, you know, is no big deal. But he's since then had withdrawn his offer. I think there's documentation to support that. So I'm a little confused, the offer's on the table or not. But regardless, we feel that, you know, the Windy Way folks feel that this is township property. Mr. John was kind enough to come out and take a look at it. And there's a couple of issues, not just, we don't see that to be a safety issue with the residents, like people passing through on foot, but we don't want motor vehicles going through. But we would like a passage for our kids to go through. And Mr. McCann at Hidden Lane, they don't want that type of structure. And then secondly, there's a fire concern, because there's a lot of wood, trash, and things up against the fence, which, you know, has been there for a while. We also raised that as a potential concern. So that's pretty much where we're coming from, you know.
I think Mr. John and his crew were willing to go out and clean up the debris and make it look nice, and less fire hazard.
Well, you have pictures on the backside of the fence. I think it's private property back there, but it's, there's just quite a bit of wood up against the fence.
Mr. McCann, is that the property that you're going to assist the elderly, ill woman to clean up?
Yes.
Very neighborly of you. Very nice.
Okay, so it sounds like the issue's been resolved. There's going to be, the neighbors are going to put up a fence, and we're going to clean up the debris. Is that right?
I think the only issue that's hung up is the.
We want passage for children.
Well.
Can I respond to just a question of this?
Yeah, please.
If I may.
Thank you.
Please, yes, you're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
We, I went to a resident on Windy Way last weekend. I offered to pay, our neighbors agreed to pay two-thirds of the cost, and asked them to pay one-third of the cost. They unanimously rejected that and said the township should pay for it. At that point, I withdrew my offer, and we made a different offer, which is we'll pay 100% of the cost. I don't think that there should be a passageway, and I'll give you three reasons for it. The first is that there is a resident on Windy Way that came through there in their four-wheel ATV vehicle, and we really just don't want that kind of traffic in the neighborhood. The second thing is that the ground that is the divider between Windy Way and Hidden Lane is really uneven. If you have a passageway, you're going to have to clean that up a lot, so that nobody falls when they walk through there. If you put a fence the whole way across and you can't walk through there, you don't have to worry about it. And the third reason is that in light of sort of the kinds of burglaries that have been happening in the area lately, we think having one road for egress is safer than allowing two roads for egress. So we have three reasons that we want the fence to be continuous. And it's not meant to deprive the children of Windy Way from the creep. Come on over, just not through the fence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One more comment, sir?
I don't have any data to support it one way or another.
Good evening.
Can you please identify?
Jim Durkin.
Thank you.
Three Windy Way. I guess a couple of things. Number one is, is the passageway, that would be good for anybody that wants to go for a walk from, you know, either side of the fence, rather than having to walk out to busy Limekillin Road and, you know, possibly get hit. I mean, you know, it just doubles your amount of walking. Kids naturally can go back and forth, ride your bikes. Number two is, is that passageway doesn't have to be a hole right in the fence. It can just be an offset of the two fence lines, just so that you can walk through, like, you know, going in between the two fence lines to get in there, okay? And then my last point is, why can't we make the fence a double-sided fence, so that nobody has to take a look at the, kind of the ugly side of, the ugly side of the fence?
I suspect that the answer to that would be you pay for your side and they pay for the other side.
That.
You know, I mean, that's.
That we could possibly do, but I mean, that's, but that's the first time that I've heard, heard that Hidden Lane was going to pay for the entire thing, so, yeah, okay.
Okay, one last comment. Mr. Pachowski.
I'm sorry, I came in late, and so I didn't hear that either.
Well, the residents on Hidden Lane have all come together and have agreed to pay for the whole fence without an opening for ingress or egress.
And the board faces their side as opposed to the other side.
Well, they shouldn't have to pay for the whole fence. It's township property. Township has the roadway, that's where the fence is located, on the roadway, and so the township should certainly pay to put the fence portion on the roadway, and then private property owners put the fence on the rest of the way.
I'm not, I'm not sure. I'm, I'm.
If you look at, if you walk down the road.
There, I know, I've been there a couple of times. We've looked at this.
Not my property.
And I don't know if anybody's actually done a survey, but that fence was put up years and years ago.
Not by us.
Not by us either. But the fact is, we can, we can create a system to stop that road, and you may not like it, but the residents here have agreed to put up a fence. That's a solution that we don't have to enter into then. We can, we can go through and see what portion of the fence is on township property, what portion isn't, but we're not, we've said all along, we're not replacing a private fence. We can do something else to solve the problem, but we're not going to replace a private fence, privately installed fence. And as, before you got here, I said, I think a lot of the fence is on our roadway, our right of way, but that's, because it fell there, not because it was.
No, there's no falling business. The fence has always been on township property. The biggest portion of the fence has always been on township road.
I think that also.
I didn't put it there, but it's always been there.
You did, you did miss before you came in that we, the solution that the township had provided was that we would do a two-foot berm. So we, so we weren't going to replace the fence, but we were going to do small evergreens. But again, I mean, you have a group of people coming forward and saying, we'll replace the fence. I'm not quite sure why we're not saying, this is great, here's a group of township residents that are coming together and going to do it.
We never got word that you were going to do any kind of planting.
We just presented that tonight before you got here. That's why I was telling you that. I think you missed it before you walked in. So we were, I mean, that was the solution we were going to offer, was that we were going to do a berm, two-foot evergreens.
And then behind that, where all the trash and fire hazard exists?
We're going to clean that up. And with the help of Mr. McCann?
The township will help Mr. McCann clean up, brush, and all the wood that's a fire hazard on the other side of the fence?
Mr. John?
There's a portion there, and then there's a woman who, Mr. McCann, can you explain, there's a, there's a neighbor there you had indicated to me that was elderly and was not capable doing it?
I don't want to talk about elderly.
Oh, okay. Wasn't able to do it themselves. And you and another neighbor agreed that you were going to help this neighbor?
Yes.
Do that and bring it to the yard and.
Mr. Salisbury sent a letter to Mrs. Merrick. The neighbors are going to come together, we're going to get a wood chipper. We've been in discussions with Mr. Salisbury. It's under control. That's a whole separate process, and it's underway.
So there's an eight-foot section of the fence on our property, or very close to our property, which we don't have a survey either of the property, and former owners of our house have, they put this up.
No, 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 no. Conversation only here, thank you.
So, I mean, are they going to replace the fence on my prop that's adjacent to the road, or, I mean, what are the details?
Before we could stop the fence eight feet earlier.
I suggest you guys get together outside of this room and find out what the details are, and if you still have an issue, then Mr. John and Ms. Mason will address it.
Okay, and you'll be notifying us of the solution that you came up with?
Well, I think you guys came up with a solution.
The one that you talked about.
Well, I mean, we presented that tonight.
But you'll be giving it to us as.
We're not going to.
We're not going to do that if the fence is going to be replaced.
Yeah. It's, I think the Board's consensus is that it's either or. Either Mr. McCann moves forward and does 140 some feet of fencing, and/or the township would move forward to remove the fence and debris, and we will put a two-foot berm with some evergreens. And it looks like the consensus is, is you prefer the fence, and Mr. McCann's very graciously stepping up to do that, and I think the Board would agree that that's a neighborly resolution and.
Well, that's a consensus of a couple of Hidden Lane people. That's not the consensus of the Windy Way people, who see the lines all the time, in that area all the time.
Well, I think the consensus of this Board is if the residents are willing to pay for the fence, we're going to let them do that, rather than spend township dollars when we don't have to.
It sounds to me, I mean, a lot of good ideas, a lot of intelligent people, and a lot of people that I think, and if I'm wrong, tell me I'm wrong, but can get together over the next week or whatever and get this resolved amicably. I think you've come up.
I wish we could, but we tried that, and that didn't work. So they didn't want to pay for any part of the fence.
Only if it had an opening in it so the kids could go back.
No, no, I never, I got nothing but rejections on my offers.
Well, we're going to suggest that we, we're going to end this conversation now so you guys can go and sort it out, but as we see it now, the township is not putting up a berm, the Hidden Lane neighbors have agreed to pay for it. As far as I can, I can see kids are going to find a way through that fence, whether it's solid or has a break in it anyway. So I, if the people who are paying for the fence are putting up a solid fence, that's entirely up to them, and then we'll do our part in helping clean up.
Remove all the debris.
Clean that up.
So you're allowing private people to put a fence on township property?
It did before.
They did 40 years ago.
I know they did, but that was 40 years ago.
And then this will probably stand for another 40.
And that's without saying how much of that is township property.
So anything happens.
I mean, this development's.
Township, it's people who put the fence up are liable for anything that happens to that fence?
Yes.
It's a liability.
They, they will maintain the fence. It's their fence.
Quick question, if, as you suggested, I think Rick and Madam Chairman, to have residents come together and see if they could see this come to fruition. If that doesn't, I assume we would entertain, you know.
Yeah, I suggest that.
Coming back if it doesn't.
Come back and meet with the staff.
Yeah, with the staff.
I guess the default would be the berm and some trees, just for the, so cars aren't going through it. If the Board's okay with that, if the residents can work it out, fine. If not, the default would be someone will let it.
The fault's not that. The default is that those folks put the fence up the way they want.
Right. Right. If they don't, and they can't reach that-
If they don't, then the township has the responsibility.
Township has no responsibility.
Well, yes, it does, it's your property.
We have no responsibility to put any kind of barrier between the two.
To take it down.
Take it down, absolutely.
And put the berm up.
We don't have an obligation to put a berm up.
Well, then, would you just leave it there?
Could.
And the fire hazard, no?
Absolutely, but they'll take the debris away, it doesn't mean there's gonna be a fire hazard anymore. Yes.
Okay, I move that we, that we'll, that we'll speak to Tim here, okay? But, considering that the fence is gonna be on township, township property-
In part.
In part. Then Tim and the Hidden Lane neighbors must, must post a maintenance bond. Okay?
You know, you guys go work that out. We're not, we're not gonna do that.
This is ridiculous, Frank.
We're not doing this.
This whole thing is ridiculous. I find it unbelievable, okay? You have a fence that's falling down, debris everywhere, now there's a solution to get rid of the old fence, clean up all the debris, and have a new fence, and we're having this Hatfield &amp; McCoy issue that doesn't make sense.
No, we're not. We haven't even talked that much about it, okay? But, considering that it's township property-
Portions of it.
Portions of it, okay? That, that private citizens cannot just go do something on public, public property.
Taking our consent.
Because if, because if that's the case, I guess I'll do something right in the front lawn here.
No, I think it's because he came to us, and as a board, we said, we think that's great, that you're, that Hidden Valley came together, and, and we're, we're giving you guys approval to go and put the fence up. It's not anybody can build anything anywhere without township approval.
I know, okay. But, you know, Tim, you could've contacted us.
Go, go talk outside.
Okay.
Or we'll give you room back there. No? All right, we're moving on to the next item on the agenda.
I have nothing to report, that we don't, won't talk about later, or haven't already talked about.
Chief Logan?
All right, this is about an hour and 10 minutes.
He'll be back.
Give us the readers' slideshow, don't you?
Do you want the lights? Let me get the lights for you. I know, I was gonna go back.
All right. Next week, you guys here, the boards, and the public is welcome to come to Lennyfield Middle School for a presentation that's gonna be put on by the Department of Community and Economic Development, regarding the police regional study that's been taking, going on for better part of a year now, regarding the five municipalities that you see up on the sheet. June 8th, they gave a presentation to the steering committee here in our township building, and they presented a slideshow, basically hitting some key points. I have a copy of it here. What I did is I took some slides and I rearranged them to kinda help it, make it flow a little bit for me, because I have to do the presentation tonight, and I've highlighted a couple of things, so I have edited a little bit of their, their work. Basically, these are the five municipalities, you've got two boroughs and three townships that are in the research committee here. This is the overall geographic area, you see the two red stars up on the board, that is currently, up in the upper right, is Plumstead Township's Police Department, the lower star in the green area is this building here. The way it's being set up right now is, the patrol unit, they're proposing, will operate it out of the Plumstead Township Police Department Administrative Unit out of the Doylestown Township Building. They proposed and set up some zone controls, some zones here, you basically have nine zones that are set up in the, in the five municipalities, you've got two in Plumstead, couple split in New Britton Township, and then Doylestown Township and Doylestown Borough are kind of pie-shaped in the center there. Again, this is just proposal that's a steering committee with the help of the, some, the stats from the police departments have come up with what may or may not work. All right, there's the zone numbers. Now, this is a proposed, now this is a little tight, organizational chart for the police department, it's made up of 66 sworn police officers, with a chief, couple captains, couple lieutenants, four patrol squads down the sides here, and administrative side, which would include the detectives, and the administrative wing of it, as far as records and stuff goes. Again, this is a, this is just a mock setup of what it could look like. This will only be, whoever becomes the chief of police in this department would have the ability to do what he wants. This is just a makeup based upon what personnel we currently have, as far as the type of supervisor we have, number of sergeants, corporals, and detectives and that, and this kinda fits the way it should. So that, that's a plus. Our personnel that's currently on staff kinda fits into that flow chart there. Now, I'm gonna try and water this down a little bit for you, a couple of things you need to know. It's 66 sworn officers, which is basically where we're at right now, with retirements and stuff. It says in here that you have the establishment of four operational divisions within the police department. That's not necessarily 100% accurate. We, all five municipalities, well, four out of the five have an administration, which is me, patrol force, which is the guys you see on the road all the day, three of the five have, excuse me, four of the five have detectives. The only thing new that would be able to be organizing this thing would be the auxiliary services, which is, would, would make up an extra squad out there to run traffic details, to run the, like, parades, that type of stuff, that could be set aside to do special functions, and to supplement patrol shortages due to vacation, holidays, major events, and stuff like that. So of the four things, you already have three, okay? It does reduce the number of police officers currently in the five municipalities from 68 to 66. Now, one thing I think this board should understand is, when Doylestown Township was at full staff, we had 22 officers. Currently, we're at 20. If I had, if tomorrow you said, Dean, you're gonna be the chief of police, what do you need? I would tell you, I only need 21. So we've already, we've already reduced our staff based upon the last police contract, where you're agreeing to go to four, 12-hour shifts, we'd be able to reduce our staff, if we were at full staff, I would like 21. Again, we only have 20, but we would only need 21, so we saved you on there. All right, moving on. All right. This is gonna reduce your cars, you know, let me just speed this along here. All right, I'm sorry, if I go back. It says you're gonna have six uniform officers assigned to the auxiliary unit, which is fine, you're gonna increase your full-time detective personnel to six. Currently, we have two here, there's two in the borough, there's one in New Britton Township, and there's one in Plumstead Township. So technically, you're not increasing, you're gonna stay status. You will get a rental, if decide to bring Doylestown Township into it as the administrative wing of this, you will get a rental out of it, which is a plus for you, it will help reduce your costs. But with that being said, realize that New Britton, Plumstead Township's gonna get a rental, Doylestown Township's gonna get a rental, which means three police departments now have vacant buildings that they can rent out to private civilians, whatever, and get rentals, so their, their cost savings is also gross. Couple things, stuff you need to think about as you're moving forward with this thing. It says that an overall decrease in the current combined police budgets of about, almost a million dollars. That's yet to be determined, and I'll show you why. The current demographics, and this is what's gonna drive your cost, this is what's gonna drive your cost, and I did highlight this, we are, in this column, Doylestown Township, we have the highest population, we have the highest percentage of population, we have the highest amount of housing units, and it says that we have the highest amount of full-time officers, okay? See, it says 20, because we're operating a man short. We're actually, we're operating two men shorts, but again, depending on what you guys decide to do with the merger, can we go to 21 and get back to where we need to run? The proposed cost distribution is gonna be driven, if you see here, Doylestown Township, which is this column here, or this row here, will be responsible for 29.6% of the entire budget, which is the highest of all five. And it's based upon those, the prior information here. It comes, it gets driven from all this stuff, which is pretty standard, and there's a number of merged police departments out there, and this is just one of many things that they can use to figure out the cost cut-up. All right, this is the proposed police staffing, without getting into a whole lot of things, it's basically telling us that the proposed staffing levels for a merged police department, counting police and civilian employees, is 75. 66 sworn, nine civilian. Currently, we would have 76, which is not accurate, since retirement of Chief Lake back in March, we're down to where we need to be. So, staffing-wise, why is that important? Because when you start talking about comparisons, I know Barb, this is your big one, as far as comparison, when it comes to contract negotiations, you will no longer be comparing yourselves with another 20-man department. You're gonna be comparing yourselves to 65 to 75-man departments, who put you in the areas of Lower Marion's, the Staple College, and these types of things. So it's, it's tough to say where you're gonna fall when you start talking about contracts down the road. All right. All right, this is the nuts and bolts. In a nutshell, it is saying, in the 2012 police department, reported budgets are, and Doylestown Township is this row, we're just gonna deal with this row, the top one is what the DCEDs had, 3.3 million 99,000. That is not actually accurate, because if we were at full staff, at 21, 22 guys, you would be paying 3.1, what is that, 3.5? Okay?
Yeah.
3.1. 3.1? Left my glasses on. All right. The bottom line, the bottom line is, what that does, is if we were at full staff, the savings over here would actually be greater, okay? So that's, that's a plus. But, when you start talking about a 2012 proposed budget for the merged police department, which is this column here, they're telling you that, and this is where I have to be very careful, they're saying it's about 10 million. My guess is about 11.2, okay? And why do I come up with about a million-dollar difference? It's because 86% of the budget is gonna be personnel costs, it's nothing that we don't, we're not aware of. 86% of the budget will be based upon personnel costs. And they're saying, on average, it's found that those police departments spend 85% of their annual budget on personnel costs, they're estimating ours to be 86. We haven't even discussed a police contract. A police contract needs to be negotiated, and when you're talking 86% of the budget for an unknown, I have no idea where to go. The only thing I can tell you is that 14% of your budget is non-personnel costs, that's easy to figure out. You're talking about police cars, you get to static price, you're talking about rent, you're talking about how much does it cost for pencils, paper, those types of things, and it's only 14%. So that's where you gotta be careful when you go into this, figuring out what the personnel cost is gonna be. Now, they're saying, they got these figures here, that I think, honestly, are a little low, okay? Now, let me go back here. This figure, this 11.2, where they had this number here, when you negotiate the contracts, and it's, you're gonna hear this, the term, the police contracts will get the best of the best. That 11, that 10 million dollars there is based upon the top salaries for each patrol rank, whether it be chief, lieutenant, captains, sergeant, corporal, patrolman, it's based upon that. What happens is, there's a lot of other things that go into a contract that you have to account for. I took our police contract, I took the best salaries, and I took our contract, and I plugged it in, and that's what it is, 11.2. So if we have the best of the best, that's what you're looking at. But quite frankly, I don't know that our contract has that, so these are the things-
For the PBA, we don't have the best of the best.
Yeah.
You know what?
Litigated that one, and lost.
That's why I'm not in the PBA anymore, any of those guys, anyway. That's what you have to look at and say, okay, what can we really negotiate? What can you negotiate? Because you can't let, you can't merge without negotiating out of that contract. You can't, there's, nobody else can provide police services to your township without you negotiating out of the contract, okay? So, now here's what they're looking at, the 2012, they're saying, and this is our column, I believe, Doylestown Township, that would be where you're at currently, and you get a little bit of a savings, little bar. If you look across, who's gonna make out the best, it looks to me like Plumstead. All right, what's this? Already there, there. Personnel, personnel. All right, these are the things, this is the 14% of your budget. We can work with this, we can cut stuff here, yeah, you're gonna lose 12 less cars, but 12 less cars is, you know, 1.3 million of a 12-million-dollar budget, it's not gonna... All right, there's what you're saying, that this is a comparison of what you'll need as far as vehicles in a merged police department, 16 patrol cars currently, you know, we have eight mark cars here, we have four administrative cars, which have made up for the chiefs, lieutenant, and detectives, so you would save, you will save in cars. This is just extrapolated out over five years, based upon, you know, I guess if you're gonna take that, the, I find, this is, yeah, if you take that, their number here, and you extrapolate it out over five years, they're saying it's gonna be that, and it's based upon a presumption of X percentage over years. All right. One good thing that the police department would get, and this is, this is, there's no reason to believe that the police department, a merged police department, would not be eligible to get a live scan machine. A live scan machine can, you can actually be a good revenue generator. The size of these police departments right here would not benefit the state to give us one individually, but as a merge, you can make some, some good money. I think it was $120 for every person that's arrested, gets booked through one of these things, it gets charged back to you through the court system, so you do get it through the court costs.
Chief, that $117,000 figure was for all, the entire regional-
Yeah, this would be, they're basing that over a year, that's an income. Now, they're saying live scan annual income of 135 times 1,200 arrests, for $163,000, less the purchase price is 117, obviously you only got a purchase at once, so each year, that is a plus, and there's a grant for a couple of years for the police chief salary. Now, they are also gonna, you know, and this is kinda interesting, if you look at some of these numbers here. All right, they're basically saying it's costing per person, I guess, per year, comparison, where are we at here? Doylestown Township, 43 cents. Monthly household cost, $43.58.
So under that plan, Doylestown Borough will pay almost twice per capita for the-
That's what they're paying now, isn't it?
Or is that what they're paying now?
I believe that's what they would be paying.
So...
They have all the, they have more calls.
But this is what it's basically, I guess, you know, the annual household cost for a merged police department would be $523, and I don't know how much of your taxes are actually broken apart to go into that thing. And this is the interesting one that they try to, you know, explain to you, you're paying $43.58 a month for the police department, but you're paying $117 a month for fires, TV service, so... I don't know how much you out there, I don't know how much you're out there watching us.
The way you watch.
No police officers living in my living room.
But that's, that's it in a nutshell. The bottom line is, I think it's, I think that next week's meeting is very informative, I think that the township residents should have an opportunity to go, but in all honesty, you have to start thinking about the contract. You have to, before you start spending a whole lot of extra time, you have to start thinking about contracts to see if it's gonna be cost-effective to you.
Well, question I have regarding, you didn't have any slide to show the, I'm gonna say, the activity with people doing wrong things in the community, such as, I saw a chart, I think the Intelligencer had, a long time ago showed, the borough was highly per square mile, per capita, and always very, very, very heavily needed police because of all the activity, where we were a lot less, even though we were much larger, much larger population. And, we looked at this, God, how many years ago, 15 years ago in the township here, at the time when we looked at merging with the borough, and it was not advantageous for us at that time, because the cost was gonna be greater for us as a township than it was for the borough. They were gonna save money because of all the activity, and all the need for police and so forth in the borough. And I kinda view it that way now, and looking at the numbers I saw from the Intelligencer.
Yeah, well, Doylestown Borough definitely has an increased amount of people in it on a daily basis, because of the courthouse being there, but what we all forget is, they don't live in the borough, so they come through the township. We surround them on three sides. So every day at rush hour, everyone's coming through our municipality to get to that point and location, so, you know, we have just as many people coming through at shorter periods of time, and once they're there, they gotta leave. The other thing is, they have the nightlife on Fridays and Saturday nights that we don't have. So they do have some things there that, you know, we're trying to be, I'm trying to be delicate on how I approach this, they do have things, there will be benefits to them, definitely within this thing. The other, the other thing I really need you to be aware of, it states that we should be at 66 people, okay? And they're gonna tell you that you can decrease that by attrition. I highly recommend that you don't decrease by attrition. I think if they're saying you need 66 guys, they're telling you need 66 guys for a reason. You should probably be thinking- You should probably be thinking, and the reason why I say that is, you start losing police officers, that one, that fourth thing they said was new, the auxiliary services division, it's the first division that's going to start going. Okay? Then you're going to start potentially, and I'm going to say this potentially, losing services to your township. We have a traffic advisory committee that we've been trying to get traffic going here in the township. That, all special auxiliary services, is that traffic unit that's going to be out there running those traffic details, trying to get people to do what we want them to do in the township. Once you start decreasing personnel, you're going to lose those services. And I've spoken to a couple of police chiefs who are in merged police departments. Their biggest concern is, they're starting to lack personnel because they're not being replaced. The other thing that you need to be careful is, if you're saying, where you can save money is, when there is a retirement, if you replace them and you start thinking about two separate contracts. Now, that's again, is going to be that eighty-six percent of your budget's personnel cost. That's going to be a negotiations thing that you're going to have to go on with through the unions, to figure out, okay, what type of pension fund do we put them in? What type of health benefits do we put them in? What is that pay scale for any new hire? And that's where you might be able to see a savings down the road, but until you start seeing those people retire and seeing the long-term effects, it's, again, it's eighty-six percent of it is a guess.
You also don't know about the relative strength of the various pension plans.
That's what you pay for.
Because when the merger happens, the money gets merged, and then you get a new, whole new actuarial set of criteria to see whether or not your pension fund is underfunded.
Right.
So that's another element that hasn't even been addressed.
And that, to be honest with you, I have no knowledge on how that's going to work, but I do know that if Doylestown, if they decide to go into a merged pension fund and Doylestown Township's is underfunded, common sense would probably tell you, we're going to have to fund it. So there's, I think that, and I'm, I don't want to sound like I'm, I'm saying too many negatives, it is a good idea. Do we have, do we, can we do it long-term? How quickly do you want to see cost savings? If you want to do it quickly and see cost savings, it might be tight. So, but I think-
All right. Okay. I have a question, and this may very well, I suspect, come out at the next week's meeting, but would, with the projection of what percentage is the cost of Doylestown Township, that's real time, that's, that's right now, right? As, okay, just as an example, we're mostly, we're mostly built out, I mean, the township is, we consider that, you know, for the most part. So we're not going to see any large increases of population or anything like that.
There's a whole, there's a whole, I don't know if this term is one-hundred percent correct, but there's going to be a memorandum of understanding that's developed between the five municipalities. And if I'm not mistaken, that one of the things is, every so many years, it's reevaluated, and it will adjust itself back in line.
Because when you look at some other, like maybe Plumstead or something, then it has a big area to develop, then that would-
That could adjust, yes, absolutely.
The population factor won't change, except you get a census, because there's no accurate detail of population on an interim basis.
And I guess one of the other things that a lot of people come up with, and there's talk about a brand-new, X-million-dollar police facility. The police facility, the way it's, my understanding is, would be broken up evenly, twenty percent per department. So you decide to build a ten-million-dollar facility, it would be twenty percent per department.
That was the original report, said ten-million-dollar facility, and that wasn't including acquiring the land.
But the reason they break that evenly up, as opposed to twenty-nine point six percent for Doylestown Township, is to keep the smaller municipalities in it. They can't afford to walk away from a twenty-million-dollar investment. So that's the way they decided to do that, try to keep the smaller people in from, from leaving, because they lose that entire investment. You don't get it back. You walk out, you don't get it back once you build.
Chief, you saw a similar regionalization breakup. Were you able to talk to that individual and find out what the salient issues were? Can you go on the record?
I really, off the top of my head, I can't, I just know that there was some, there's, it was, had to do with the percentage of things here and there, and what, what one municipality wanted and what the other one didn't. So, but there are a few that are breaking up, you know. Just as some are popping up, there's some that are breaking up.
North of us, they had a couple municipalities leave, that, what do they call that, the Pen Ridge?
Yeah, Pen Ridge Regional was one of the first ones, and actually, I think it might be the only one in Bucks County. They originally was both East Rock Hill, West Rock Hill, Sellersville Borough was the three, and then Sellersville Borough pulled out and is now with Percival Borough as a contracted police department, I believe.
But Pen Ridge is still in effect.
Pen Ridge Regional is still there with both Rock Hills.
Yeah.
Yes. And again, you know, here's the, you know, the question, I like to think that over the last twenty-five years that I've been here, that we've been a pretty active police department, and we've been pretty well, you know, we provide our citizens with a lot of good things. I've asked this question over the last year, how many police departments do you see? And I say the same for the other four municipalities, isn't it? You know, for the most part, these are four other good municipalities, you know, we're self-sufficient. How many self-sufficient police departments merge? I don't know. Like, nobody's been able to answer that question for me. So...
Well, it's my opinion that Doylestown Borough and New Britain Township, or New Britain Borough are the two that really need it the most. I mean, when I look at their makeup right now, they have their chief from the borough of Doylestown being the chief of New Britain Borough, and evidently, because of their activities and so forth, there's, they need a lot of help in that respect. I know they need a new police station in Doylestown Borough, they're in the basement, they have that little hole in the wall, and they-
I think, you're right, but I think in closing, and for just interest of time, when you start going in the next one's meeting, it's my recommendation that you stop all this stuff about the fourteen percent, and you start looking at the eighty-six percent. And the only way you're going to do that is to start getting these PBAs together and saying, what are you going to, what do you want out of us? Other than that, you're spinning your wheels.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
All right. I think you can, does anybody have any questions we need to ask?
There was one more thing in the, in the police chief's report. There was a letter that was received from Sean Welby, who's the-
Yeah, we got that.
You got that?
Yeah. He's ready and willing to negotiate on behalf of the P B A, yeah.
Are there any radios and potential costs for the savings from that? Radios will not be savings, because you need as many radios as there are cars. No, that's not what I understand.
No, I think, I think that if we do the radios, not every officer's going to have a radio. I think you are correct, there will be a reduction in amount of spending that will be in the radios, but again, that's part of the fourteen percent. It's, what we're trying to do is trying to figure out whether they're going to, at some point, early next year, we're going to have to have radios.
Based on the numbers that the D C E D put together, Doylestown Township would show about a hundred and thousand dollar savings the first year. Chief's saying, you know, that's not a realistic number, because as we all know, the labor costs are going to be more than what they, what D C E D projects. So going from, going from start, going from zero to, to this deal, there's not going to be any savings for Doylestown Township. There's going to be a whole lot of administrative turnover, and there's going to be a whole lot of work going into the formulation of this five municipal regional police department. Over time, there may be a savings, but there's going to be no way of calculating that. What I think you can always, what I think you can depend upon, though, is the sharing of technology and the increased need for specialized police services, which you will get with a five municipal police department as opposed to an individual police department. So as we get more sophisticated with our crime, we need to get more sophisticated with our crime-solving techniques. That you're going to get with this kind of system, but, but we're not going to save any money. Nonetheless, we're all going to get expensive anyway.
Two important points, Chief talked about salary, and Mr. Garten talked about the pension.
Yeah, well, we're, we have, we, these are all, these are all things we have been discussing for two years. So, thank you, Chief. Well done. All right. Anything from the manager?
Yes.
Or township engineer, sorry.
He's not here.
Okay, manager.
I just have two really quick things. You have my memos, I won't go into a lot of detail, but I did attend the July tenth meeting in the borough that EPA hosted on the Chem Fab Superfund site. They are moving forward. We are in the comment period right now, and their recommendation is to do a soil removal as the remedial action there, and that should help reduce the amount of pollutants that are getting into the groundwater and into the, and heading towards the Cooks Creek. So stay, you know, there's been articles in the paper-
Stay tuned.
Stay tuned, as more information comes out on that. The second thing, and I think very positive, is the DART. The committee continues to work, and through the good offices of Senator McElhany, they've, and PennDOT and SEPTA, there have been funding allocated. There will be two buses coming online later this year, or I guess it would be next year, they'll have the two buses avail, or two, yeah, two DART buses available. And then, kind of a neat thing, they're going to start in September, around the fifteenth, with the arts festival. It'll run for about six weeks. They're calling it the Cultural Loop Bus, and that'll provide a Saturday and Sunday service for tourists and visitors and residents in the area, eleven to nine on Saturdays and eleven to six, respectively, and it goes from the museum area and the parking garage in Font Hill and Maravine Tower. So that'll be a nice addition. They have a nice little campaign material that they're providing with that. And that's all I have at this time.
Thank you. Sean, do you have anything?
Not only that, I wanted to mention that I participate in our Fourth of July celebration here at the township, with the fireworks and the music, and it was a great event. We've never had an opportunity to participate before. I'm glad I had a chance to come up. And while I did my share of emceeing at the event, I promised that maybe by next year I could learn to use a microphone. I'd be more working yours, but, any event, it was a great event, and a big thank you, and I applaud everybody that was there, Stephanie and Karen, and everybody from the Park and Rec Board, and Rick, and everybody else. And so it was a great event, and I encourage everybody to come out next year.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Tom?
And you did a good job, I have to say, emceeing.
Thanks.
Did a great job.
Thank you.
But yes, I just want to mention one thing. We just, Governor Tom Corbett signed legislation to make the two oh two, I'm going to say, parkway-
Scenic byway.
A scenic byway, which means that there will be no bellboards, no signs, whatever on it. It'll be kept clear and be a wonderful place to, to have between Montgomery, Montgomeryville and Doylestown, which will have the bike and hike, and it'll be quite a nice, might not be nice to police, I don't know, but it'll be a nice, beautiful trail to, to ride back and forth, and I think it'll be a great asset to our community, and I just wanted to-
Thank you. Do you have anything, Mike?
Just real quick, I just want to, really just, I was at a traffic advisory commission just this past, is it Wednesday? Last Wednesday? And, and just being around them, I'm constantly, you know, basically, I'm just giving them a shout-out, because I'm just really amazed by their passion and enthusiasm, and every time I go to a meeting, they all have really great ideas, and they're just so vested in making sure that the roads are kept safe and, and keeping residents informed about their traffic calming measures and, and what they're trying to do, and working with the police department. And, and also tonight, we had two great candidates for the alternate position for the E A C. So I think it's just really great to see the volunteers that are in Doylestown Township. And, and again, I know we said this to Janine and to Sean tonight, but, you know, it's, it's really amazing to see all the talented people that, that are comprised of Doylestown Township, so.
Thanks, you're right. Rick, do you have anything?
I also was impressed, as usual. I went to many of Tom's meetings and Ryan's meeting, and it's encouraging to see residents that aren't on the committee to show up, and that really means a lot to me. So please don't hesitate. If you want to come to any of the meetings, you got the time and the date, just come on right in here, and you'll leave impressed with the talent and skill that we've got from volunteers in the township.
The board has been invited, members of the board has been invited by the Thompson Organization to the Bucks County Classic. They are hosting the international bike competition this year, bike event. Saturday, September fifteenth is the, is the bicycling from, the cycling from New Hope to Doylestown, and then the Doylestown Loop is Sunday, September sixteenth, and Thompson, which is called the Thompson Criterion, and we have been invited to participate in their V I P tent, and we're encouraged to do that between noon and three, and you may even be, have the opportunity to ride in one of those race cars. So they asked me to specifically tell the members of the board, supervisors to, that Thompson has invited us on the, on that Sunday event, twelve to, twelve to three at the V I P tent. The other thing I wanted to, to share with the, with all of the residents, I, Mr. Hannah heard this today, we had a ribbon cutting up at the Dalval College parking lot, and, you know, it's extraordinary that there would be a ribbon cutting for a parking lot, especially with a hundred-degree temperature, but I, it, it does have a story, and I wanted to share that story here, because a lot of the residents don't know what, what happens behind the scenes. And it's a beautiful story of public-private cooperation, and it brought together Doylestown Township officials and staff, Delaware Valley College people, PennDOT, J.D. Morrissey and their engineers, and other entities. And it's a story involving playing fields and a cornfield and the two oh two parkway. It was two thousand and nine, Dick John and all of us were out on one of our road trips, and Dick, and, I'm sorry, Tom was there too, you heard this, you guys. We're on our, and on our typical road trip, and Dick had this idea, when the two oh two parkway comes in, to get that dirt somehow all deposited into the, the area of Central Park that used to be the parking for Oktoberfest. And he was able to get PennDOT on board with that. They saved, you'll appreciate this, Mr. Sobloski, the, the environmental effect of that is that they didn't have to cart that dirt away. They saved, you know, tons and tons of unnecessary road, wear to our roads with all those trucks, and the, and the dirt remains in Doylestown Township. And as a result, Doylestown Township was able to negotiate a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar park for playing fields that J.D. Morrissey and PennDOT constructed. We didn't have to pay a penny. Now, when we got to, very close to all that happening, we realized that Delaware Valley College had a lease on a substantial portion of the land where that dirt was going to go. So then we were, we had to quickly apologize and negotiate out of that lease, and as a result of negotiating out of that lease, we, we swapped and created a parking lot for Dalval College, which, the long story short, is, it's really not a parking lot that we cut a ribbon on. It's a whole, a whole cooperation with, you know, with our talented, led by our talented and creative man, Dick John, Director of Operations, who actually created out of a bunch of dirt, award-winning soccer fields and playing fields that will, will probably be put into operation within the, the next year. And Dalval College won, everybody won, and it's just amazing that, that all this can come together, with just people sitting down and talking about it, and everyone won. So I wanted to share that story, because the kudos really go to this man over here, Dick John, who, who had the idea and really made it happen. So thank you, because it's a tremendous asset to the township that we have now. Okay, and that's all I have. Unfinished business, none. None. New business? That would be Dalval College.
Would be Dalval College, and the college is proposing to construct a two-story with a total, building with a total square footage of forty thousand square feet, to be known as the Life Science Building. The site has frontage on East Butler Avenue and New Britain Road, located with the institutional zoning district. Plans before you tonight were prepared by Gilmore Associates, for date of June four, two thousand and twelve, and will last revise July three, two thousand and twelve. If the board has a need to do so, I can provide the abbreviated version of this, or you want the extended version of the discussion.
Well, the planning commission has recommended that.
Planning commission's recommended approval. I've developed a list of conditions that are appropriate, shared them with representatives of the college, and they're fine with them. I'd be happy to articulate those, and the board can ask any questions it may have, and then you can see where you want to go.
Why don't we do that?
You have, you have the architecturals.
Yes, I have some renderings, if you're interested.
Yeah, why don't you pass those out?
I'm going to circulate those while I'm doing my script here.
The way I'll leave you all with a picture here.
If the board was inclined to approve the preliminary final land development application, the appropriate conditions would be as follows. One, compliance with the decision of the Doylestown Township zoning hearing board with respect to the variance granted related to the front yard setback. Compliance with Boucher and James' report dated July eleven, two thousand and twelve. Compliance with the- Compliance with the Pickering Courts and Somerson Report dated July 10, 2012. Compliance with the Pinoni Associates Report dated June 19, 2012. Compliance with the June 19, 2012 memorandum from the Doylestown Township Fire Marshal and Code Enforcement Director. Next, applicant shall complete the tree survey limited to the area proposed to be developed as part of the application. Applicant to install a bike and hike trail parallel to Route 202 behind the college's existing white fence. Most of the trail will be located in the township, but the college will install the bike path through New Britton Borough with their concurrence. Copy of the location for the proposed trail is noted on the plans, and the trail shall be between 8 and 10 feet wide, based upon field analysis at time the construction of the trail is to occur. The other criteria related to the trail is set forth in a letter from Michael Baker, Jr., Inc., dated June 29, 2012, but I believe Mr. Hadda may have a conversation about some bollards related to that. And the trail shall be incorporated into a non-exclusive easement to be granted by the college to the township. Applicants requested the following waivers, from Section 153-20C1, so as not to complete a topographical survey of the entire site, as they're only going to do that for the location of the new building. Next, 153-20E, so as not be required to conduct a traffic impact study. Next, Section 153-24B2A, so as not be required to do frontage improvements along East Butler Avenue or New Britton Road. Next, 153-26A3, so not required to put curving along the same roads. And 153-34B3A, so as to be able to plant street trees at different intervals than the required 40 feet because of site conditions. The applicant will install nine trees to replace existing trees that will be affected by the construction. The final lighting design will be subject to approval with township engineer and township planner in consultation with township manager. Proceed of all permits approved by the agencies having jurisdiction over this matter include miller, PennDOT, Conservation District Utility Providers. Advocate shall secure and demonstrate proof execution of sanitary sewer and water service agreements with the appropriate utility providers. Execution, funding, and development financial security agreements. No signs shall be installed to such time as appropriate permits have been received, and the signs shall comply with the township sign ordinance. Plans to show, to be revised to show the boundary line between New Britton Borough and Doylestown Township, a location usually agreed upon by the applicant and township engineer, for some concerns about where the boundary is. Building shall be ADA compliant. The college is encouraged to work with New Britton Borough with respect to extension of the rail, of the trail system, the intersection of 202 and Shady Retreat Road in the future, and the board needs to decide if you want to accept the additional right-of-way along New Britton Road. Do you wish to?
What's the staff record, what's the staff record?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Hannah, before you get to the issue of the bollards, are those conditions acceptable?
I believe that they are, and with me is Steve Cantrell, he's the project representative for Delaware Valley College.
Can you mention this?
Yeah, July 10th, the last one.
This is important, I know, it does an important job. Okay, good, sorry.
What about the bollards you wanted to raise a question?
The bollards, we had shown, on the current set of plans that are in front of the township consultants, we did show that the extension of the path, the bike path along the frontage of 202, a thick boundary with, with Borough. I think it's just a discussion we need to have with Baker in terms of-
At the field, during the field construction?
Yeah, I mean, we have the location shown on the plan, we just have to have a discussion, I think, with Baker, so just to determine the final location of the bollards. They're trying to prevent vehicle traffic from going on the bike path, but we also don't want to prohibit the maintenance vehicles at the college from their ability to serve.
How about if I mentioned that the issue of the location of bollards to be agreed upon mutually by the township and the college?
Sure.
Does that satisfy that?
Yeah.
I guess that's, we're having any questions?
No, I've looked at this stuff a couple times.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve this, but the conditions set forth by our solicitor.
I'll second. Can I just ask a question of, Rick, you, you're the liaison to Plan of Commission, and you've attended all of these meetings, what is your, what are your thoughts on-
Mr. Cantrell and Mr. Hannah came to the meetings, and everything is, I, two things that I was really excited about, other than the whole plan, et cetera, was the trail system. I mean, this is just going to help college students, it's going to help the residents, it's going to help everyone involved. And, and the other thing, Mr. Hannah wants to talk about a little bit, but how the, it's set up where you can go in the upper lobby and see the entriesway, and what you're doing to preserve that monument, if you will, to the college.
Yeah, the, I'll just be brief, but the, the renderings that are before you are from H2L2 architects, who are the college's architect that has been selected to help them through the schematic design of this, of this building. And what, really, the credit goes to H2L2 in positioning the building, so that you're preserving the, the old historic gate and the sightlines from the intersection of 202 and, and New Britton Road, between that intersection and down through the quad area. That was also the reason why we, we requested the variance from the zoning hearing board for this front yard setback, was to preserve the quad area for the use that it has with the college, and, and keep the sightlines preserved.
Thank you.
I'm good.
Any other questions? I'm calling question all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Fine, you're good. Good to go, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, it's a beautiful building, and a great addition to the, to the Soon B University.
And the township.
Okay, um, okay, this is, this is not a happy one for me. Plan review extension for York and Swamp Associates.
Let me begin by saying this is hopefully the last extension, because obviously, I, if they don't proceed with getting some things done in the interim, my suggestion is we would consider turning them down at the, prior to the expiration of this extension, because they haven't done a whole lot. This property's been on the sheriff's sale list, and is on the tax sale list, so, but I think we would need to give them notice, but I would suggest we grant the extension, but be prepared not to grant any additional extensions without significant progress.
So, they're asking for a 90-day waiver?
Extension.
Extension, a 90-day extension, so.
If you, if you grant less, you'll be having at the meeting the same time you're having your sewer meeting and all that stuff, so-
We got to go the 90 days.
90 days makes sense.
So, where does that take us out to?
October 20.
Okay.
I mean, I'm okay with the three month-
Motion to give them a 90-day extension?
I'll second it, and, and I, I support it with the caveat that the solicitor said, I mean, we, we've got to get, like, tomorrow in touch and find out where this is, where we're going, what, what's the holdup?
I think we just tell them they have a 90-day extension, let them come back to us with what they want to do. I'm not going to, I don't think you need to tell them they have to get on it.
I, I think we should at least let them know that we-
I'll have a conversation with their, with their counsel, and tell them that not much has happened in many months, and that this township's running out of patience with respect to the continuation of extensions here, and that time is getting up.
I would appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, I agree.
Question? If the property is sold in the meantime, before that's up, is all plans that have been in place today?
It depends on whether the- Probably not, because the lender is taking, would be taking back the property, because I don't know that anybody's going to bid, and unless there's a separate transaction involving the former owner and whoever buys the plans to assign the rights, it's not likely that they would be. Continue.
Not likely, slimly possible.
Slimly possible, yes.
We thought they were gone last month.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. All right. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you. And you're going to, you're going to do that in writing, or?
I'm going to do that verbally and in writing.
Okay, thanks. All right, Destination Peace Valley, there's a proposal from Mr. Stanford on completion, or the, the next phase of this plan?
Yes, Destination Peace Valley, the Bike Hike Committee met this morning, they recommend to the board that you enter into the agreement to have Baker start this process. We've also been in touch with the DCNR, and it does look like this project is getting on the shortlist for potential funding from the grant money that we've put in, and they're looking for the easements, but we need to do this work in order to obtain the easement with the county. So, the recommendation from Bike Hike is that we move this forward at this time.
Is there a motion to approve?
Show move.
I'll, I'll second that.
Do you have any questions, anyone? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Fee schedule amendment, Resolution 1637.
There's some items that have come up, one, in terms of escrows related to our land development process, some clarifications from code enforcement, and one additional fee for the solicitor's permit from the police department. And those are our changes that we'd recommend at this time.
Motion to approve the, the amendments to the fee schedule?
Show move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Records retention disposal, Resolution 1636.
Outlining the items that need to be disposed of at present time.
It's in accordance with the state act.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to approve?
Show move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Treasurers' report, is there a motion to approve July 17th?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the bills list for both July 3rd and July 17th, unless we have an issue on any one? Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, both July 3rd and July 17th, bills lists are approved. The next meeting of this township Board of Supervisors is August 21st, Tuesday, 7:00 PM here. Sounds of Summer Rock Series continues with Robert Eric and Central Park on the 18th of July, 7:00 PM. Ray Vaughan Band at Chapman Park on the 25th of July, 7:00 PM. And the Beach Bombs at Central Park on August 1st, 7:00 PM. Mission is free to all those concerts. The Saturday, July 21st, Leaf and Yard Waste Recycling has been moved to August 18th, Saturday, 9:00 AM to noon. And please note, and don't forget, the meeting of the Regional Police Department Committee next Tuesday, July 24th, 7:00 PM, at Lenape Middle School. No other business, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.
I have documents to be signed.
And there are documents to be signed.
I have another, nice, um-
You going to use that again?
I'm sorry.